Is strong in safety, climate change, real urgency and the environment, equity, multimodal and quality of life. The project will address a known safety issue by expanding Highway Five from a two to four lanes, adding trails and sidewalk improvements, and mainly to reduce the crash rate in this project area by 51% and reducing fatal and serious injury crash rate by 90% in this area. And then just a final local note, the Hamburg Lions are having their pancake and French toast brunch this Sunday, the 19th, from 8:30 to 12 at the Hamburg Hall. Come out and support the Hamburg Lions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Fahy. Commissioner Urdeman?
I made a point in the last couple of weeks through Christmas break and otherwise to go see what people in the surrounding metro areas are doing in different areas. One of the focuses that I have this year is intentionality and amenities to attract and retain multi-generational families. And so I had a chance to go to Blaine Sports Center. We hear a lot about Blaine Sports Center and their hockey fields and all those things, but also talked to some peers up there and what role the county played in that space. And then I got to see the building of the amphitheater in Scott County. 20,000 seats, $100 million to be spent soon. And then, of course, with the kids in sports right now, Brooklyn played in Lakeville. We'll plug for the team. They won three games in the championship, but to see the amenities that high schools and neighboring areas are putting into their sports complexes. And then got some good news that it seems like there's an accelerated path towards potentially having a regional sports complex in our area that's before profit. So those are all big things contributing to the potential of future amenities. Always scares me when I think about three of the fastest growing cities in the state are in our county. Two of those three, well, three of those three have close to no non-residential tax base. And as we look at it from a county perspective, Chaska's done a relatively good job, Chan Haston, of having balanced tax base. Carver, Waconia, and Victoria have close to no non-residential tax base. And so as we look for the next 20, 30 years and future, that's super important. And what are those things? And so anyway, for what it's worth, went and saw that. Dropped in on the Narcan Luncheon Learn that the AMC offered. I know it's a hot topic in a lot of different circles, and it's come to the forefront in a lot of different ways, but it was informative to hear from staff and others what's going on. And I think that we'll probably have more conversations in the year ahead where we can play a role or should we play a role, but because AMC elevated that, it must be a topic across the state. I also had a chance to sit in in the 600 Building kickoff. I thought Leo A. Daley was fantastic and thorough, and that was affirmed. Our head of communications was in there, and she's had the chance to also sit through Chan Haston's building, the significant development and growth that they've done in Chan Haston redevelopment. Tom, I know you've been part of that years ago and are close to it, but I think Leo A. Daley laid some very good expectations of what's to come, financial, planning and otherwise. And I think that the right people were in that room, so it was fun to be a fly on the wall on that one. And this is our opportunity. I mean, I think that's a 100-year building that we're building, and we can't look into a crystal ball, but plan the flexibility of the future, what that could be, and what's appropriate engagement with the community. So there's transparency, but also knowing that sometimes the loudest voices come out that don't have a whole lot to add. But 82 million bucks is what we're looking at right now, and so that's not insignificant. I had a chance to talk to a former city council member, Mike Wong. He's a coach for robotics. Was surprised to find out that you can participate in our community in robotics as really a second grade. And I bring that up because I know that STEM has been something that we have silently been very good at in this county, whether it's our libraries, our schools, or others. And robotics plays into that space, and so that was interesting. The bulk of the conversation with Mike was regarding his role on the board of Carver County Local News. And as you know, you all know, when the Chan Haston Villager and the Chaska Herald went away, as well as the Victoria Gazette, which was more opinion-based than anything else, we lost a lot. And so they're trying to plug that gap for transparency within local media and then also giving people a flavor of what's going on in a more objective way. And so there's ways that we, as commissioners, can play into that, our county can play into that, and they're trying to sort their way through it. They have over a million active subscribers right now. Sorry, million, 1,000 active subscribers right now in parallel to what Eden Prairie did. They started in 2020, they're at about 4,000. So they're in a pretty good clip right now. There's an opportunity for us to post our meeting notices there, although it doesn't satisfy current requirements of doing so. There is a pathway to do so. And then you probably all should have received a note that he's invited us on a rotating basis to each contribute content for that. I plan to contribute content for the month of March. And then finally, I had a chance to be part of workforce development. Hennepin and Carver are partners in workforce development. We're kind of like the little pat on the head guy because we're so small compared to Hennepin, and we've looked at what it might look like to realign with other folks. But nevertheless, there's strong presence from Carver County there. And notably, we got a chance to hear from the folks from Polar Semiconductors. I didn't know much about the semiconductor industry a handful of years ago, but we do have a semiconductor business that's right here in Carver County. And kind of the aha moment for me was when you hear about semiconductors and semiconductor businesses, I at least think that over half of that's like engineering and really smart, smart people designing. But there's a lot of opportunity for production jobs that are, you know, significant in pay, equipment maintenance and otherwise. And so we have a semiconductor business right here, and they partnered with Polar. But I also saw, you know, where's the ability to unlock different things, career paths. They talked about the role of immigration from a supply and demand standpoint, not from a political standpoint, but from a supply and demand and who's serving these jobs. So that was eye-opening and the challenges and struggles and positives that come with that. And then it kind of opened up in a subgroup that we were talking about, the what if? What if we had things that fostered STEM within our communities? What if we had the world's first outdoor STEM-themed county park? What if we were able to unlock the potential of 212 and the road that we put through there to accelerate development of semiconductor businesses like Polar Semiconductor? And so there was that. And then, let's see, anxiously awaiting what the state chooses to do today. You know, we're on the legislative priority committee, and we have some pretty lofty asks. There's rumors that one party may not choose to come today to serve the constituents. So we'll be scheduling with our state reps and state senators to have conversation and to advocate for the priorities that we have. Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson?
All right. So I'm still in orientation mode, but I did get a chance to, I just want to shout out to the IT department. I have a computer now. I'm so excited and an email. Look online for that. So thank you. And I met with our employee relations team, so it was so much fun to meet with the people who take care of the people who take care of the people of Carver County. So that was my first kind of meeting of getting to know some more of our employees and their teams. And I have a badge, so I can, see, look, and so I can get into buildings and don't have to ring doorbells and do awkward things. So hopefully that will make everyone's life easier. Thank you for facilities on that. I also happened to be in the building, and I crashed Lieutenant Retirement Party. So I hung out with the Sheriff's Department a little bit. I could just stay all day and listen to those stories. It is so awesome. But I was pulled away for another meeting, so I was grateful for that. Upcoming, I have a cap agency meeting today, hoping to run over to the township meeting afterwards, a law library meeting, and lower watershed district board meeting. So we're off into the meeting thing. And next week, I attend Local Government 101. So off and running and having a great time and learning a whole lot. And so just thank you for everyone who have crossed my path. And again, thank you to my commissioner, my fellow commissioners for all their support. That's it for me.
Commissioner Anderson, I think the four other commissioners might have to decide how long the geez, I'm a new commissioner thing. HEMZ did that as the administrator for about five years, but...
Give me a month. Give me a month. I would appreciate it.
We'll give you six.
We'll see.
Commissioner Lynch?
Be safe on the lakes. We had an incident on Lake Waconia with a vehicle, so be safe on the lakes.
That's it?
That's it.
I got to sit in on a lot of what everybody else was sitting in on this week. Carver County has a process to sit in on a hazard mitigation plan that we need to have. This would fall in line with what I always say is the not sexy part of being a county commissioner, but in light of what has happened in California with the widespread devastation out there. Very oddly, I was out there just three months ago, standing where a lot of that was. But your county has begun the process to make sure that we know what we're doing in this area. I think as elected officials, mayors and city councils and county boards, we do need to be ready, see the future, if you will, on what could possibly happen. We don't have a lot of the issues that California has, perhaps some of them self-inflicted. But it does make me wonder what could happen. And we've got great law enforcement and Sheriff's Department and everybody. So while the meeting was boring, I think I knew why we were having it. So that's all I have. Let's get a motion for the consent agenda.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Fahy, second by Commissioner Lynch to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on any item in there?
Mr. Chair, just a couple of things.
Commissioner Urdeman?
Support the items that are on there. 2.7, multiple times I've asked for and would love to continue to consider a couple of times a year, having yard drop-off at our Public Works Building in Cologne as a service to the residents, and then also as an opportunity to test if there's an uptake there, an interest and need. We have the space, we have the equipment. I think that's worth considering further. 2.8, I see that Heather's in the room too with the Laha dollars. I would like, because there's significant dollars here and we don't always get those, and then sometimes I think other counties maybe spend those, and we don't really have an outcome to be shown years later. These are real dollars, real tax money that's coming out of real people's pockets. So just would ask on that one that maybe a check-in in a year as to how did we spend those dollars and what impact we have. I also see the CDA is present, and I know 70% to date is kind of a gentleman's agreement. I don't know if that's been formalized in the contract or whatever, but just would like to see where those dollars are going. I know that we have a significant opportunity with our missing middle, and I know that there's also restrictions as to how you can spend those dollars. But would just ask maybe in a year that we put it on the calendar to come back and say, how did we spend those dollars? Where was the best impact? Is there a better way to do it? And then as you go, I'm sure undoubtedly you're having conversations with your peers. How are they doing it? Is there anything we can glean from them? And, you know, there's so much momentum happening at the CDA, so much expectation and change is not lost. It's less than a year you've been in your role, but those are, you know, in a year, maybe that's a good time to calibrate. 2.11, again, I'm looking back to Heather, just more of a note than anything else. I've been close to, I don't know if this is included within this or not, but it prompted me to talk about Relate. I know we have partners with Relate program. Seems that they're going awfully slow to try and fill some positions in partnership with the district, and I think there's a growing need and frustration there. So if there's anything we can do to accelerate that. Those are the comments that I had. I support everything else that's in here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Urdeman, hearing any other discussion? Hearing none, the motion to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda. Those opposed? Motion passes. Item 3.1, recognition of advisory committee members.
Mr. Chair, you can handle this one if you want to. We do have four members we would like to recognize. We have term limits on, I think, all of our advisory committees, but those members are listed in the packet. It looks like we might have one member. Ma'am, are you?
Mary.
Mary? Okay. Mary, you want to come up? Mr. Chair, Mary was on our WMO, Water Management Committee. So good to see somebody in the room. Feel free to come up to the podium if you want to say a few words about, and thank you for your service, your experience.
My name is Mary Strather, and I'm on the Water Advisory Board representing Beavins Creek. And when you're talking about things to draw people to the Carver County, you know, I look at Beavins Creek, and if it were in Minneapolis, it would be like Minnehaha Creek. And you know how that draws people to Minneapolis, and it's a valuable thing. So as time goes on, the waters of Carver County, yes, they're lakes, and that's the first thing that always comes up on our committee reports, but they're also creeks. And those creeks are just wonderful things coming through the highlands and lowlands. So I hope you can continue to support those creeks and maybe give it a little bit more support. Can I just do a little right-angle turn and point out that I'm also on the Arts Consortium of Carver County? And we're going through a really rough patch right now. We weren't able to pay for our rent in a community center. And the Arts Consortium of Carver County links lots of people in Carver County who make art around their full-time jobs. And the Arts Consortium was the only thing that was the thread that linked all those beads together. And there is a lot going on in Carver County, just beautiful artwork. So if there's any way that the board can find to support the Arts Consortium, that would be great. We run into the problem when we apply for grants is that we're, our profile of the county doesn't support the need to have a variety of different constituents in it because we tend to be kind of well-off and white. And so that's a problem. We also compete with funds that are being given to Hennepin County and St. Paul. So we're falling between the cracks, and maybe the Carver County Board could help with those cracks. But anyway, there you go. That's it.
Well, Mary, let me present you with this.
Very much. They kicked you off. They kicked you off. That's a good thing. Yeah. I learned so much from being on that board. It's astonishing the work that they do and the analysis they do of the water. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate it.
Thank you for serving, Mary. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jim.
Well, and I know Commissioner Fahy's spouse is very involved in that.
Janet?
Arts community, and so perhaps Commissioner Fahy, along with his spouse, can help to spur us and find how we can help them a little bit. So I don't think he minds. Beavins Creek, I got to learn a little bit more and see a little bit more of Beavins Creek. I know in Minneapolis, Minnehaha Creek legislators believe it to be just a drainage ditch because it gets too high and it does a lot of things. But it is. It's draining Carver County and Lake Minnetaka and doing a lot of different things. But I know you want to live by Minnehaha Creek, even if it's just a big old, that's what creeks are, their drainage. But thanks for making it do what it's supposed to do.
Mr. Chair, I'd note there are three other advisory committee members that we'd like to recognize on page 70 of your packet.
Gwen Kurt, my longtime library board and trustee library board appointee, Mark Lagergrun on the Park Commission, and Carol Ossen, also with the WMO, correct?
Right. Thanks go out to those members. This county wouldn't be what it is without those advisory committees. We do have other openings, by the way, Mary, if you're interested. We're always looking for good people. So that's it, Mr. Chair. We'll send out the certificates to those that couldn't make it.
Thank you. I don't think we need a motion.
No.
Thank you, Mary. All right, 3.2, amendment to the 2025 budget for the Greater MSP 2025 Annual Membership. I believe this would be a Commissioner Urdeman.
Yeah, so one ask coming out of this one, and I don't know if there's any other better form to do so than have a discussion here. Could be a work session or otherwise, but I'll give you a little bit of history, but the one ask coming out of it is that we invite Peter Frosch, that's the executive director of Greater MSP, to come out and talk about all the depth of what Greater MSP does, what it has done and where it's going in the future. Historically, just to give the history and probably more for your benefit, Commissioner Anderson, than anybody else, but historically, we have been a non-voting member. Three years ago, we became a voting member. Historically, the only place or best place for this to sit was to send money to the CDA, carve out money from the CDA to pay for the membership. And then about a year ago, it was decided that, less than a year ago, it was decided that money would not come from the CDA, and then it would not be funded. Commissioner, or sorry, HEMZ had said that if we wanted to do it, the best place to do it would be through the $100,000 of Commissioner contingency that we budget every single year. And I think that there's some history there as to what we have spent, what we haven't spent. If we were to approve it as a board, where the money would come from, there is a path to do so. I had asked, after this kind of came up out of the blue as an option, just to participate as part of the Greater MSP, I had asked that Peter be given the opportunity to come. At that time, Commissioner Degler did not want to have him come speak and defer that to the CDA. The CDA decided that they didn't want Peter to come as well, and it's kind of been this weird little area of, you know, it doesn't belong on the CDA, doesn't it be on the CDA? We made the decision to not approve max budget that was requested by the CDA, to move from max budget to what was approved. That was one of the areas that there was cut, and it's about $30,000 annually. $30,000, I think, to borrow your words, Tom, is a drop in the bucket, given the impact of just one project coming to fruition. At current, we have the potential of a billion-dollar project codenamed Tulip that is medical-related, pharmaceutical, that wants to move from Europe to here, or at least have present in the United States. Granted, a billion-dollar project is going to get interest from a lot of different cities and a lot of different states, but we are in the running, not only as a state of Minnesota, but as Carver County. Greater MSP has been instrumental in helping accelerate the potential of 60 to 80 for-profit softball fields and an academy here. They came out about three years ago to do something that we coined, the Carver County Commerce Corridor Tour. And with that came a report from Amanda Taylor. They gave the recommendation that we pursue tourism because we're well-positioned for that, and they gave us a bunch of other suggestions as well. Reports like that run from anywhere from, you know, $30,000 to $100,000. And that was part of the value of Greater MSP is coming out and delivering that report. And at that time, the board chose not to accelerate tourism. In fact, chose that we wouldn't play a role in there. So that report is still active and available, and we can share that with it. So the board was split 3-2. Your predecessor, Commissioner Anderson, was not in support at that time of pursuing it, and so I simply am asking that board chair, workman and others, that we invite Peter on behalf of the Greater MSP to answer any questions that they have, what they can do for us now and the future. Two more points. I think that sometimes we underestimate the political capital of relationships. We have two sizable companies in Minnesota that their CEOs are headquartered here, are located here. One is the CEO of Mortenson, one of the largest builders in the world. He lives here and is part of the Greater MSP OICOS. And then the CEO of Ecolab, he also lives here in Carver County and is the board chair of Greater MSP right now. And so I don't want to underestimate the relationships with those two individuals, and then the larger relationships with, Greater MSP acts as our regional economic development agent. Do they have flaws? Absolutely. Are they perfect? No. Have they won every single thing that they've gone after and gotten? No. But I think for the cost of $30,000, the political capital of their lobbying efforts and the collective efforts in being part of the whole, we are currently the only county in the metro that does not participate in Greater MSP in a membership way as of this year. So that's my ask, is that we allow Peter to come in and answer questions and present what it is that Greater MSP does, and then from that, we, and other things, other inputs, we make a decision if we want to rejoin Greater MSP or not.
Do we need a motion or a second to move forward on discussion, or is it okay if I just ask questions?
We haven't usually been that strict, but if there is no motion and no second, then probably talking about it isn't a good idea.
Okay.
Traditionally.
I move that we invite Peter to represent Greater MSP and answer any questions that we have to consider if we want to rejoin Greater MSP.
I'm not sure that we need a motion for that. We can. I'd love to hear from him and the organization. I don't know under what setting, if that means a work session, and a work session probably be the best.
I mean, I do have some questions that I would like to ask Commissioner Urdeman. And I guess the big question that I have is, how does this fit into the strategic plan, comprehensive plan of Carver County?
So, great question. I think you, myself and others share that we want to bring our taxable rates down. I think as we knocked on doors this past election cycle and beyond, that's the number one thing, at least for myself, that's raised, is the taxes are unaffordable for seniors, downsizing for young families and in-between. And so as part of an overall strategy, how do we get there? We can do it on a wish and a prayer. We can do it by cutting, or we can do it by growing. And I've always been in favor of saying, how do we grow that tax base? As I mentioned earlier in my comments, is we can burden that on housing, and there's no doubt that housing will continue to grow here. But if we don't have a generous tax base, it's going to impact our schools, it's going to impact our cities, it's going to impact our county. And so part of the overall strategy of economic development, unlocking 212 and the potential that was promised through the growth of that road and other things, Greater MSP would be a piece of that accelerated development to invite people to come locate their businesses here.
But back to the question, does it currently fit into the strategic plan of Carver County?
If our strategic plan is to lower the taxes and make it an affordable place for people to live, work and play for a lifetime, absolutely.
So here's my dilemma. And Commissioner Urdeman, I really appreciate your long-term thinking, and I appreciate you thinking out of the box. I personally feel like we need time as a board to figure out what our strategic priorities are as a team. I feel like this is, and I'm familiar. I watched the December board meeting. I had a conversation with Allison. So, you know, I'm familiar with all the background on this. I just feel like this may be a bit premature as we need time as a board to figure out what our strategic priorities are as a team. I also question, and I agree with you that growth is going to help our tax base, but I also wonder if this is really our role. When I talk to the city of Chan Haston and the city of Chaska, they feel like they have a handle on economic development, so I'm not sure that this is part of the role of the county. So those are my questions on how it fits in. If we were to, I see like this is a tactical matter that has strategic implications, and I would prefer to answer the strategic question first before pursuing with this. That's where I'm coming from.
Commissioner Urdeman, respond to that.
I don't know if I'm the only one that defends the, let's, there's an and. We've traditionally been, you know, the county that says one eligibility per 40 acres. We've traditionally been the county that says we're just going to defer it all to the cities. And as a result, traditionally, we haven't had that umbrella organization or leadership to look at it holistically as a county. And maybe that would have been a great place to sit before the decision to put four lane on 212 was made. Maybe it would have been, but we decided to put four lane. Our predecessors decided to put four lane through. And so we have about a 17-mile stretch from Carver specifically, this is just one example, from city of Carver to Norwood, Young America, about a 17-mile stretch that's kind of out in no man's land. And so we can either say, we'll leave it the way we've always done it, and the results will be the way it's always been, with one exception, that we don't have a robust tax base for that 17-mile stretch, or we can take a different page and say, we've invested, I don't know, a couple hundred million dollars in aggregate for 212, and we can unlock the potential of that area by revisiting things. All right? So that land can sit dormant. I'm not using this as an example, exact parallel, but in contrast, if you look at what Shakopee and Scott County did with 169, is it perfect? Absolutely not. But they're generating, I don't know, 500 million to a billion dollars per mile of tax base. And so if you think about... you think about generating $1 billion per mile, less than a mile off of 212, you could feasibly by 2050 have $10 billion incremental tax base, and we tax about 1% here, about a third goes to city or township, about a third goes to school district, about a third goes to county. So, you could potentially unlock $10 million a year in tax base to pay for things in the future. Does it create some challenge for folks that are used to 41? Yep. Building 212 did that. We accelerated that conversation by building 212. Everybody held hands and said, we're going to do it all the way to the end. We went to the ribbon cuttings and groundbreaking, and we've claimed all the victories. But now, the hard part, the really, really hard, that was hard. The really, really hard part is to say, okay, now what does the next step look like? Are we going to just let 212 sit there, or are we going to look at it? Some specific ones, and you've heard over the years, from a different point of view, but Bongards. Where is that going to be served with water? In sewer? Is that going to come from Norwood, or is that going to come east and be a Met Council conversation? And I think a lot of these conversations, whether they get sequenced in a couple weeks or a couple months, it's neither here nor there. The only urgency about this one is, is instead of saying, let's continue what we've always done, we bucked that trend on this one. We bucked that trend by saying, we're going to abandon, you know, three or four, or five or six years of participation with the Greater MSP, and we're not going to do it. So, as opposed to, let's just continue and wait and see, we said, nope, we're going to stop doing that. I do wonder and worry what reverberations that sends when I talk to a developer, and he says, we'd much rather do business in Scott County. They're easy to work with. We've looked at different things, blah, 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 blah. And there's a lot of pieces of that equation, no doubt about it. But I get the strategic side of it. I also get the damaging of relationships, political capital, and being the only one that doesn't participate. If there were seven counties, or six counties, or three counties, or even two counties that are like, man, we don't like this Greater MSP stuff, we're out. But we are choosing to be the outlier in a place where we traditionally have not chosen to be an outlier. We've chosen to be status quo, and status quo has not been the outlier. This is different. We've chosen to be an outlier, and for what reason? And so, I wonder if this lingers on more than weeks or months. And I don't know, see the harm in inviting Peter to come in and speak and hearing from him. No decision needs to be made. I think it's better to hear from him sooner than later, as that informs some of our strategic conversations, and I'm hoping that we have those meetings in February and March, et cetera. So, I think hearing from him sooner than later, making a decision doesn't have to be anything that's imminent.
Well, Commissioner Urdeman, I was, I was on the Chanhassen City Council and got to vote on officially mapping Chanhassen, or Highway 212, through Chanhassen. And of course, it happened in Chaska and Carver and all the way out. And the county board would have officially mapped it in, in the townships. But we needed all the people who didn't live here to get through here, who was a big part of 212. There's a lot of people in, right here in downtown Chaska that loathed the idea of a new 212, because it hurt their economic future. Lenzin Chev, what is now the restaurant down there by Lenzin Chev, it's out of my head, sorry.
Cuzzies.
Cuzzies.
Cuzzies. He's going to, Mr. Lee is going to kill me. But I think you're, I think, and I, like Commissioner Anderson, I like, I like your forward thinking on this. I'm just not sure that, I'll speak for myself, my, your vision, I see your vision. So, what you're talking about in the Bongards between Norwood and Carver is, might fall under what would be called orderly annexation agreements. And I don't know what MSP can do about that. I don't know what MSP, I want to know more, and that's why I'd love to have, I don't know if it's the next available work session, to have Peter come in. I don't know that this should be with the CDA. I don't know, I want to know how, I think, I think with the $30,000 for MSP, I can tell people, we're in the mix, but I don't know what that means. What is, what does being in the mix get the taxpayer of Carver County? If we, if we have the genesis of an idea of how 212 should look, I think we should absolutely work to use that to our benefit. Back to when I was on the city council in Chanhassen in 1938, Highway 5 was a single-lane dirt path. It was that way in Eden Prairie, too. Eden Prairie developed. Carver County has many advantages, and one of them was not so much about what we wanted to do with Highway 5 in Chanhassen, but when we looked east, we knew what we didn't want to have. And I can look at Eden Prairie that way. My apologies to everybody in Eden Prairie, if I'm telling you didn't do it right, and Chanhassen and Carver County is doing it correctly, I'll fight you over that. But, but they've got some crime issues. I do, I want, I want our Sheriff's Department to think about, well, how do we do things differently? And that has everything to do with development, and the great book, Defensible Spaces from the 70s. How, how do we avoid the pitfalls of the ring of suburbs before us? And so, this is a really big issue to me, and it should be to Commissioners Lynch and Fahy about, well, how is that all going to connect up? If I flashed back here in 50 years, what would this all look like? Wow, we just sort of let the cities willy-nilly develop a bunch of housing, and that's it. And now, we have whatever, and we have crime, and we have whatever. So, I would love to be that different place, and I think we have the potential to do that. And we can't do that if we're not looking forward. But I, I want to know more about how MSP is going to help. I think we need to help ourselves with that plan first. I don't know what department of Carver County, we do have a planning and zoning department. But, but I want to know how, how that $30,000 for MSP is, is going to help us accomplish things. So, what is the return on investment? So, I say we keep talking about it. I say we maybe don't pass this today. We leave it hanging in the future so that we can see it fitting better in with where it is we want to go. You mentioned the 41 and 40, I don't know that we're getting rid of 1 and 40 out there. But, but there's the ever, ever-powerful Met Council overseeing our comprehensive plans. And so, there, and again, MSP can't help us with that. But aren't we beginning our comprehensive plan?
Starting, yeah, pretty soon.
It's, it seems perpetual. But, but the comprehensive plan is the perfect time to start thinking about how we can do that. So, we do, we are in touch with those townships in between, and the, who is the mayor of Bongards? They're not, it's not the same. Chanhassen, or Carver, and Norwood Young America, and get those players, you know, I know, I know, the 169 crew did that. I know 35W, as it was expanded, all the Burnsville people and Lakeville people were on the 35W expansion committees. They met tirelessly about what that would look like. And so, there's the advantage of me being along around way too long, perhaps. But, but I think, I think the MSP thing is, is a wine before its time. So, let's, let's figure out a way to make it, have them help us do what I think your vision is. Does that make sense?
It sounds like we're on the same page of, we're in support of hearing from Peter to get more information. And I think that parallels what you're saying. I'm not asking today for us to approve Greater MSP. I'm asking for Peter to come in and pitch what it, what value they bring, and we can ask those questions. I think that'll also buy us time. I know there's strategic planning conversations coming up, that'll help inform that. And I don't think that Greater MSP is the Holy Grail, but I don't think that we should chop off our nose despite, you know, it's a nominal $30,000, given the potential of some of these leads that are in the hopper. I can almost guarantee you that if there's a lead in the hopper that's being worked for Carver County, there are a number of other places that lead will go if we are not participating.
Commissioner Urdeman, and I don't, I just want to be careful. When I hear a nominal $30,000, I take spending taxpayers' hard-earned money very seriously. Nothing is nominal. I also would like to hear from Commissioner Fahy, because this is your district. And yeah, I don't mean to put you on the spot. If you have nothing to say, that's fine. But I would like to hear your thoughts.
If I may before, like, I do have some things to say.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, but if you want to respond, I apologize.
Mr. Chair, you invoked the nominal. I mean, if you could, if I could tell you a $30,000 investment, invested over the, every year for the five years is going to net you a billion-dollar tax base, it is a nominal amount.
I agree, but I'd need to see the numbers on that.
If I can continue, if, if, if I'm looking at our, if our warrants, and I brought forward a charge that was $5, because somebody spent a lunch on a travel or whatever, that would be a nominal amount. And if you look at it as a percentage of the impact in the ROI, $30,000 is nominal compared to bringing just one multimillion-dollar development here. It is nominal. And that's not to underestimate, me more so than most, have looked through the warrants, have looked in the details, and I treat those tax dollars like they're my own. But it is $30,000, if you look at it at a five- or 10-year horizon, is nominal compared to the benefit that the Greater MSP could bring.
Could, right.
Commissioner Fahy?
Commissioner Fahy?
Mr. Chair, if I may, when, we've had a lot of these types of discussions take place, excuse me, at the CDA Board, and we've, Allison is here, and we've asked for the metrics from Peter and from the CDA Board, where's the data? And we haven't gotten anything. And we've been a member of the CDA for, or, excuse me, of the Greater MSP for, is it five, 10?
Well, at least since before 2015.
So, if you do the math, if we're paying $30,000 a year times five years, or 10 years, that's a lot of money for me to look at, where's the value? We haven't gotten anything. We can talk about a million-dollar Tesla plant coming to Carver County. We can talk about a billion-dollar medical facility coming to Carver County from Europe. It's coming to the United States. And if we had the metrics, if Peter would respond back to the CDA request for information, for metrics, and we've asked him repeatedly, and so, why hasn't he responded back to us? If we got members sitting on that board that can help us get those answers, and if a work session is where we need to discuss that more, and to have Peter come here and be ready to answer those questions, that'd be great. But I would want to see the metrics. I don't want him to come here and say, okay, I'll get you something. Well, we've been asking for that stuff for two years plus. And I've talked to some other commissioners in the metro area that's part of the Greater MSP, and they're questioning also the value of the Greater MSP. And is the value there for the price? So, my opinion is we need to see some information in the metrics. And just to talk about Highway 212 and the 17-mile stretch, basically nothing. I think if you walked to Carver and went through Cologne and into Norwood Young America and said that 17-mile stretch is basically nothing for 212, what the city of Norwood Young America is doing in their industrial park and their second industrial park investigate, or investment, we already have a facility there in the second industrial park. The first industrial park is growing because of 212. And that's where that economic development is happening in those cities. And the Bongards issue, the water issue with Bongards, I've been to the meetings. Bongards wants to maintain their own water source. They currently do not want to hook up to Norwood Young America. They do not want to hook up to Cologne, because it's too expensive. That would be their expense, and then the expense for the city, whichever one can do it. Cologne can't do it right now. Norwood Young America, they approached Bongards. Bongards said, we want our own water source. That's what we're doing today. It's working great for us. Thank you for asking, but we're not interested. And economic development, as it happens now with 212, look at the city of Carver, one of fastest-growing cities in the county. That's part of economic development, and that's because of 212. Cologne is growing. Norwood Young America is growing. But that industrial stuff and that economic development is happening in those cities because of what the county has done.
Commissioner Lynch, you want to weigh in?
We had some communication issues with the Greater MSP, asked for information, didn't get it. So, we've wanted to step away from it for a while. If Peter wants to come out in a work session, I think that'd be, information is always good. If we get some information, and we could reevaluate, I thought yourself and Commissioner Anderson had wonderful comments about getting more information. So, information is good. If Peter wants to come out, it'd be wonderful.
Okay. And I don't know if we need to have a motion for that. You know, if he can come out, and I don't know what metrics we're supposed to be looking at, but I'm open to any and all. But if, if MSP can do what Commissioner Urdeman thinks they can do, let's pay him $100,000. So, that's not a motion either.
More importantly, Mr. Chair, if we're going to do the work session and invite someone out here, I'd like to set some parameters for Peter, hopefully, to come with some of the information. Now, how many leads have come to Carver County? How many of those leads have resulted in a business moving into Carver County? They should have all those numbers. They're great at producing reports. I went to the Greater MSP website, and I was clicking on some of the links, and I was pretty disappointed in their dashboard was from 2019 information. Where's the new information? So, let's have some parameters, because Peter can come up here and talk the talk on how great MSP is all day long, because that's his job, and that's his love. But I want him, if we can set some parameters with him, to say, okay, bring all the metrics. You have all the metrics, you have all the data, show us the results, and if Carver County has spent their money wisely.
Mr. Chair, I just want to level set, too. Like, it seems like there's a departure from the reality of what economic development is and what some people think it should be. Peter's not going to come in with pixie dust and give you, here's 10 projects that we do, that we've done. There's been ebbs and flows in that relationship that hasn't really afforded itself to have a $500 million result. These are investments that you make up from. You have to make those investments over years, and then you get results to come thereafter. So, Peter won't be coming to, and show you 10 projects that would. But if you want to parallel that, I would certainly be open to hearing the results that have come out of CDA that has handled economic development for the last handful of years. We'd like to see those as well. The last time that the board came forward, I think Julie presented this, we were told that the effort was largely focused on choose Carver County. And choose Carver County, I think, on an annual basis, had 2,000 clicks or views or something like that. And in parallel, that's about a third of what I get for one post on my own social media site. And so, like, I think this needs to be a two-way street, and I don't want Peter to step into a hostile environment, or we're not going to listen to something that's reasonable. I think that there also needs to be a lack of deflection to say, you know, we've asked the CDA to do this. I think we've all agreed, it doesn't belong in the CDA. So, I'm not exactly sure why we keep coming back to CDA being that, that point of the conversation. It was a convenient mechanism for us to find funding. The history was, is my predecessor had said, you guys are going to do economic development. They said, okay, and they really didn't do it. And that's not a slap on anybody. The focus of the CDA hasn't been that. And so, if we're going to expect Peter to come up with metrics and all those things, I'd like to see, you know, how much money has been spent from the CDA and what results you've delivered. And JP, you've been attached to that for some time. And so, I kind of want to just click the line and look into the future and say, Peter, like, we have questions. We want to have value for our money. Absolutely, we want value for our money. Economic development is important, and everybody looks at it a little bit differently. This is where we've traditionally been. Peter, where do you think we can go in the future realistically? And he can tell And he can tell you the, the leads that are in the hopper. We're not talking about a mom-and-pop business that's going to generate two to five million bucks. We're talking about hundred million dollar-plus businesses that are generating eighty thousand dollar-plus jobs that can afford to live, work, and play here for a lifetime. And those don't happen overnight. They also don't happen by saying, we're going to do this, and then we pull it back. Like, you have to have a long-term partner, or you're not going to be the recipient of those leads. And if we don't receive those, those leads as a partner of Greater MSP, I'll tell you who will receive those leads. Woodbury will receive those leads, Blaine will receive those leads, Bloomington will receive those leads because they're active participants in here. And if we choose not to do those and continue to walk away to it, fine. We're left without any tactics when it comes to economic development at a large scale. And I fear for, in twenty years, if we don't do economic development at a county level, I fear that the opportunity for two twelve will be delayed. And I'm not talking about, never once have I said that Bongards needs, Bongards, the entity, needs to receive their water and sewer from, from west or east. I've said the Bongards intersection doesn't get unleashed unless we have an answer for water and sewer, for additional buildings that will complement that intersection. Bongards has been self-sufficient and fine to be, but I want to make clarification. The last thing I want to say is the Lenzin property, uh, it's now widely known that it's been sold. Uh, it's been sold to, I think it's, uh, well, I think it's Lennar, um, that will build houses. Our answer for economic development is not more houses. And I think that I heard recently is unless your house is worth over five hundred thousand dollars, you're not covering the services associated with that house. There's no lack of people, um, uh, that, that need that two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, that that house is not. We're buying ourselves services. We're buying having to deliver more and more services. Businesses have close to no services that are needed outside of water, sewer, and roads, because those people go home. Right? And so the balance is, is you're getting tax base without the cost associated with those services. So, uh, I think we got what I wanted today, which was to invite Peter. I'll coordinate with staff to figure out when the best time would be, and I'll have a conversation that, to articulate as the liaison or traditional liaison, what some of our board wanted to hear.
Commissioner Anderson.
Um, I, I think the biggest question roaming around in my brain is you, um, is what is our role in economic development? And I think that, that we need to have, we need to explore that first. You, you bring up the Lenzin property. Um, that's, that's the city's decision. And, um, I've, I've been in government long enough to know that we all have to stay in our lane and understand what our lanes are. So, um, I'm, I'm fine with having him come back and, and, um, discuss, but but I personally think we need to answer the economic development question and what our role is first. And I'm, I'm not sure I see the urgency. I, I, I know Commissioner Lynch on, on December third said, I'm fine with walking away for a year just to sort all this out. And, and, um, I kind of concur, concur with that decision. So, so having him back is fine. But let's, let's figure out our strategic priorities, and let's figure out what our role is.
Also, Mr. Chair, just regarding, uh, the CDA and the economic development, we do have those metrics. Allison can gladly pull those together with, uh, community investment grants, what we have done for these small cities and these small businesses. And it's in our packet every month at the CDA meeting. So we're not hiding anything there, and the CDA is producing, and it's just unfortunate for Commissioner Uterman to make these statements that really are not factual.
Well, I will say, um, this is the healthy debate of a still young and growing and vibrant county that we're all excited to be a part of. And so amen to the discussion. I'm glad we're having it. Uh, here's to many more. So let's, uh, let's talk to MSP people and CDA people and anybody else who can, uh, help us row the big, big boat. So I appreciate that. Let's move on to the
Mr. Chair, uh, I need some direction. It sounded like Commissioner Uterman was going to reach out to Mr. Frosch to schedule a time to get him on a boardwork session, correct?
We'll have a little work staff to get that scheduled.
Okay. Uh, and what, do you want that limited to the Greater MSP discussion, or you want to add the CDA, uh, historical performance and what they're currently doing to that work session agenda?
I, I would like to have the CDA here to, to be in the room. It's, it's a working session, that, because they have the past history.
Right, inviting them is one thing, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Fahy, but what about reviewing their, their, their work that they've done in relation to this issue?
Well, I, I think, I think they're two different things, but that they would both be at the same work session would be smart.
Yeah, but then what's the focus of the work session?
Correct.
I think that's what Dave is trying
Well, we've asked CDA to bring us up to speed on what's been going on in this area. And I think MSP's uh, task is to sell us on the idea that we should be a part of MSP. Commissioner Uterman.
Yeah, I'll recap what I had for notes, what I'll offer to Peter is, is commissioners have asked for, uh, proof of results. Um, Commissioner Fahy asked for metrics. Uh, what's the sign of a good partner and expectations of that? What's the county role in our county and other counties? Because I know that, I think that's one of the key part, parts is, is the way I look at it is an expanded role of the county, as an umbrella organization in those areas that aren't city. Um, it's beyond orderly annex. Um, and I don't know what the other counties are doing. I think he'd have a good perspective. General, uh, comments by, uh, Peter on Greater MSP in the future, their focus and the expectations? Um, uh, why Peter didn't respond to the specific, and, and I'll just give you the answer to that. I know he's always recognized that across the, um, the seven-county metro, that they leverage their liaisons for it. So when I found out that he hadn't responded to that, um, the response back was, well, your board chair said he didn't want to hear from us, and your leadership at CDA said they didn't want to hear from us. So I think it's probably a communication gap. We can close that gap, and he can address that and talk to that. Um, and then, uh, CDA present and then, um, uh, future. What is our role in economic development? I think that Peter can probably have an opinion to inform what others are looking at. Does the county play a larger role, or does it play a smaller role? Do we continue to do what we've always done and, and push it to the cities? I know there's been a lot of false starts to the cities. You know, last, most recent one was Chuck, when Chuck came in, there was high hope that all the, uh, city developers, economic developers in the cities would come together, and then there'd be this umbrella that we would help. And it was like, it was another false start. It's like, man, we've touched that hot stove a few too many times. And so if those are the topics, if I missed any with Peter, I'll articulate and have him, um, weave those into his presentation.
Good, Dave?
That's good, thank you.
Okay, item three point three, appointments to advisory committees. What do we have left?
Seventy-four of your packet, Mr. Chair, you have a handful of appointments that are open?
Okay, the action requested motion to appoint library board member for Commissioner District Two. That is me, and I will appoint Wendy Eggers to that.
Is that a motion?
Uh, I'll make that motion, second. Motion by Workman, second by Lynch. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to appoint Water WMO openings for Bevins Creek and am I saying that east-west?
East-west, right.
East-west Creek? Carver Creek?
It's West Chaska Creek.
Chaska Creek, sorry. I played in that creek yesterday. Okay, who is open here?
Yeah, who makes this appointment?
And we did, uh, if I could, Mr. Chair, if I could ask, uh, Administrator Hemzey, did some research on this, and then they have to live in the, the creek watershed? That was the
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioners, I, I believe you appointed Joe Pollock to District Five.
No, Kellen Schmidt.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I had that wrong. Kellen Schmidt. Kellen Schmidt to District Five, and my suggestion would be perhaps to rescind that, appoint him to District, or to the east-west Chaska Creek instead.
Bevins Creek.
Bevins Creek instead. Uh, that would cover that appointment.
And then, Mr.
Kellen Schmidt, you could appoint him on the, to District Five.
No.
I'm sorry.
Kellen Schmidt to Bevins Creek. And then Joel Pollock to District Five.
District Five. Could you, could you rephrase that correctly? I'm sorry.
So
So, so
Where did Bevins Creek come in?
Bevins Creek Watershed is one of the citizen representatives.
Oh, there it is, okay, sorry.
Oh, I see.
And Kellen Schmidt lives in San Francisco Township in Bevins Creek. So we have to go back and look at those appointments we ma- we made.
Okay, is there a motion to withdraw Kellen Schmidt from his appointment?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair, to remove Kellen Schmidt from the District Five WMO and appoint him to the Bevins Creek WMO representative.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lynch. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
So do we still have an opening in this?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint Joe Pollock as the District Five WMO appointee.
Second.
Okay, Joe Pollock, uh, motion uh, by Fahy, seconded by Lynch. Any discussion?
I do have discussion, I'm sorry. I'm confused. After this, will we still have one?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And you have your page seventy-five?
Yep, I am on page seventy-five, but thank you. Yes, okay.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, there's a vacancy for youth for a library.
Wait, wait, we're not done with this yet, are we?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to it, because we, sorry. Let's say WMO yet?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we have one more there, let's, let's
So, so my question is, um, do we still have an appointment for east-west Creek? Okay.
Yes.
But, but, so who makes that appointment?
Well, the board does.
Oh, okay.
But there is a vacancy, there's, there's two individuals.
Can, can I, because I, um, um, I do happen to know Mary Stassen and her passion for this. Um, so I would be a proponent if nobody is opposed to appointing her in this role?
Is that a motion?
I guess so, yes, that's a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Anderson and a second by Commissioner Fahy for Mary Stassen for the east-west Chaska Creek WMO position. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Commissioner Uterman.
So WMA is full, full now, right?
Yes.
No.
Yes. No? Do we have one left?
Because there's, according to the chart on page seventy-five, there's four county residents, one from each watershed area. So we have Bevins Creek, we have Chaska Creek.
So do we still need one from
And Crow River.
Do we still need one from
No.
No, because
Then we should be complete.
Yeah, I think we're full.
Yeah, I think we're full.
All right.
Good.
We'll, we'll blame this one on the statute, it is really confusing.
Yeah.
I'll just need Paul in the room. But I think we're full.
And Commissioner Fahy, thank you for, for sharing my confusion on this, I appreciate that.
We'll have Paul in the room next time.
So
Commissioner Uterman.
Library, it looks like we have a youth opening, um, if it's okay, um, Hemzey to have Chris to reach out to some of the school districts and make it available to them, uh, through their communications or whatnot. Okay, fantastic.
Good, thanks.
All right, we are going to move into a closed session. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved. I think we have to discuss what we're going in for.
Yeah, Mr., Mr. Chair.
Closed session to discuss last written offers for Highway Five Project Arboretum Area Project.
And I would add that that, if you could read the statute that allows the board to go into a closed meeting, helpful, Mr. Chair.
Minnesota Statute Section one-one-seven dot zero-three-one provides that the condemning authority may make a last written offer of compensation prior to filing a petition for eminent domain. A court may award reasonable attorney's fees, expenses, and other costs and fees depending on how much greater the final judgment or award is than the last written offer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I would move to go into closed session.
Second.
I have a motion by Lynch and a second by Uterman to go into closed session on this matter. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
Can we get five minutes?
I mean?
Can we get five minutes?
Uh, let's take a five-minute break.